Reconvene from closed session, uh, from reconvene to open session. Anything to report out?
Uh, no, we convened in closed session for conference with the city's labor negotiators. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. Call meeting to order. Roll call. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Malsin.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer.
Here.
Everybody will please join me in a silent prayer and Mark, if you'll lead us in flag salute.
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, if you'll read the video statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 22nd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 23rd at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch, library branch. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. Agenda approval additions or deletions. I would like to move the appointment, um, to the Youth Commission to following presentations. Or actually, following public comment would be fine.
Oh, item I six for discussion.
Item I six for discussion. Anything else? Okay. Presentations. Oath of office ceremony.
So, uh, I have the pleasure of introducing and/or reintroducing, um, three of our newest hires. But now, we get to do it in the capacity of police officer. They're all now graduated from the academy and, uh, they've been on the street for a few weeks now and are all doing really, really well. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of an introduction of our three newest. And, uh, then they get to be sworn in. So, it's a great pleasure that I first get to introduce to the far right is Cameron Smith. Cameron Smith was born and raised in Lodi and graduated from Lodi High School in 2011. Following his, uh, successful graduation from Lodi High School, he joined the United States Army where he spent four years in the 1st Infantry Division, um, at Fort, uh, we at Fort Riley or, yeah. And then after he, uh, he started 14 after he got out, um, at the rank of sergeant. He moved to Texas Love, Texas, and he went to Texas Tech University. And he spent two years there. And really interesting is that then he decided, well, I'm going back to California. I'm gonna finish my bachelor's degree through their online program, which he did. And, um, then he applied with us and, uh, just did extremely well. We're very pleased. Graduated from the academy and, uh, okay, so he graduated. Better, I don't know, they have a test. So, graduated from the academy and, uh, we're really good at this topic, so this is Cameron Smith. And then to his left, see, I have to keep this to make sure I don't go those directions wrong, is Dylan Hutchinson. He was born and raised in Palm Desert, California, and graduated from Xavier College Repertory School in 2012. He was in 2012. And then, uh, from 2012 to 17, he attended San Jose State University, California State, Long Beach, with a major geology. Did I say that right?
Geology.
Geology. All right. With an emphasis on sports physiology. He grew up, uh, he was best known as being an athlete. He spent 10 years, uh, playing baseball in the Pokes, um, to fill in his uncle's footsteps of becoming drafted in the major leagues. So, uh, who's your uncle?
His name's Jim Schultz.
Play for the Sox. That's incredible. And, uh, so, you can tell he's an athlete. It didn't work out for him in baseball, uh, but, um, he was, spent a lot of time trying to figure out what he wanted to do and, uh, he knew that his life would lead towards law enforcement. So in his free time, he enjoyed working on his motorcycle, so hunting, hiking with his German shepherd and going to the gym. And, uh, fitness is a huge part of his life. He's a certified trainer and, uh, at age 18, or 19, he entered his first five-year competition. So he wants to keep up with that. He also, um, volunteers as a member of the Team Rubicon, a nationwide disaster relief, uh, rebuilding organization. Finally, a man I've known for now quite a few years, um, is Andrew Matthews. He grew up in Vacaville. He enlisted in the Army shortly after, uh, Redden High School in 1992. And, uh, at 21, he got his service stripes in the Army. True. Right. Yes, sir. At 21. He had many assignments, serving in the, uh, California National Guard on the counter drug task force. Uh, he also assisted the US Customs Agent with locals, uh, relocating and protecting illegal drugs brought across the border. In May of 2005, he answered the call to help fight in the war on terrorism. He spent 12 months in the Middle East supporting Operation Avrak and Freedom. He honorably served our country for more than 22 years in the Army, and he retired in April of 2014. He received a Meritoria Service Medal, which was awarded him by a two-star gym. He's close competing his bachelor's degree from Ashford University, uh, in criminal justice and social studies. And while serving in the military, he completed the advanced leadership course, basic leadership course, and the suicide prevention course. Just graduated on the 21st of November from the Sacramento Regional Public Safety Training Center. He's been married to Melissa for 17 years and he has four daughters. And so he has four daughters, but he actually said that he has spare time, which I don't understand. He enjoys cycling, reading, and being a child's cheerleader. That's his own, by his own, so, uh, how I know him is through cheerleading and, uh, with my daughters and everything. And that's how I'm mad. Is that a different believer or not of all things? So, uh, they've all been working out great now. We're really proud of them and, uh, they're getting a lot of good praise from them. I love them for it. Thank you.
I, and state your name.
I, Senator Madge Smith.
Do some, swear.
Do some, swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Enduring such time.
Enduring such time.
As I'm an employee.
As I'm an employee.
For the city of Galt.
For the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Would any of you like to say anything?
I want to say thank you for the, uh, job today. Um, it's an honor to be for the, uh, chamber and the citizens of, uh, the law. Um, becoming a police officer is always been a chocolate desire of mine. And, um, when I graduated from high school, when I was 17, I was too young to become a police officer. So I decided to join the military. And, uh, when I got out of the military, figured I was still young enough to try and give it a shot. And, um, and I gave it a shot. Here I am. And I'm forever grateful for the, you know, opportunity to, um, serve, um, the citizens of the law. And, um, just thankful. And thankful for my wife, who was over there, you know, she was supporting me a lot, you know, through the whole process, uh, going to the academy and, um, the whole hiring process. And, uh, thank you for that. And I just want to say, maybe you can, other four, see, maybe we'll have to communicate.
Next to the microphone. Okay, thank you. Doesn't sound on.
Doesn't sound.
I want to thank all members of city council for being here. And, uh, everyone else in attendance tonight, thank you for witnessing this. It's a big day for me and for my fellow voters. Um, I don't have as much of an impressive jacket as these guys in the military, but military was something I always wanted to do. Um, my parents didn't let me go in the military after high school. It all came first. Um, but as she said, I always looked forward to do something bigger than myself. And I found law enforcement and I wouldn't be anywhere else. So thank you, guys.
City council, citizens, uh, I tend to talk a lot before the academy. I'm cheap, I kind of talk, so I'll make it super short. Uh, I kind of got, not cheap, kind of talked about my background, but I'm excited to get started and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation, Galt Joint Union Elementary School District, Armfort Fitness Family Futures Center. And, good to see you, Dr. Shower.
Good to see you. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you as, as city leaders about a very special project. Um, in our, in our school system, we have a vision of growing and learning together. Over a year ago, the community of Galt supported a $19.7 million grant to help us support school facilities across our community. And in our vision of growing and learning together, we know that quality instruction is important and so are quality facilities. We've been making great progress in that area. We are looking at replacing portables and ropes and air conditioning and lots of other things as well. But in addition to that, we are looking at an existing property that we had for quite some time and how we can improve that property through partnership and grants, not through measure K. So I'm gonna go to our first slide and I'm gonna start with an overview. And, um, just let Coach hear. Okay, I'll start with, with an overview of 18 acres and the Farm for Fitness Futures Families Project. Um, we have a, a Galt Elementary School District that has over 18 acres. And in the last 10 years, we have had certain components that have developed. There is a trap that our middle school PTA group had helped to develop. And then we have a therapeutic riding program called Gallup. And what, uh, we are looking at, um, where is 18.6 acres? Is to improve those components, but also further develop the full 18 acres. Uh, one of the things, um, that we have is a lot of field out there. And about two years ago, our high school district received a career technology, um, pathways grant. And in that pathways grant, there were two pathways that we developed. One is, it was in the area of agro-science and the other was in the area of engineering. As part of that grant, there was a, a vision and a plan to look at the agro-business, um, part of it and look at a working farm component. So we worked together on that, on that part of the grant. And the plan was, well, we've got those 18 acres. Perhaps there could be a working farm component. But in order to do that properly, then we needed to master plan that 18 acres. So again, what you can see in the project overview is that in the 18 acres, um, we expand certain components. Um, we add, um, components that are gonna strengthen some of the pathways as well. And on the next slide, you'll see what some of those components are. And then I'm gonna show you a, a plan that you have in your packet as well. Um, but in addition to the career pathways, there is a, a farm component, which is an orchard. And there is also, uh, which includes fruit trees and some other components that we'll talk about. Um, there is a multi-use athletic field that is a part of that component. The Gallup, um, Riding Center is further developed and includes a covered arena over time. There is also a community plaza, which is a gathering center with a park. There is an additional component that is called the agro-innovation component. And what that would be, would be classrooms that our middle school, high school youth could use at the 4-H groups as well. It would have an area that we could use for some of our animal husbandry or, or for tacking up our horses for the therapeutic riding center. The next slide gives you a, a sense of the, an overview of master plan components. This property, over 18 acres, is directly behind McCaffrey Middle School and Liberty Cove is on the other side. And using my pointer, I'll just kind of go through the components again. Here's the working farm component. Um, after you drive by right now, you will see that it's being developed. And in fact, there are close to 300 fruit trees that will be, um, planted soon in partnership with our high school district and, and middle school students. In the, um, into the center part of the master plan, you'll see the current Gallup therapeutic riding arena. Where certainly there is the agro-innovation center, which would have classrooms, restrooms, agro chair. This right here is area parking. There would be access to this very unique center from Remango, um, Road. Right here, where you see the red arrow, is an existing, um, city park that's joint use with our, our school district. But there would be access there to the components here. This component here is the multi-use athletic field with a synthetic trap, including academic fit, or excuse me, um, fitness stations around. And a walkway that certainly our youth could use, our students, middle school, high school students, but also when permissible, community members could use as well. This last component right here is the community plaza. This last component right here is the community plaza. So it could be a gathering area that, that students, families, community members could use in terms of the different activities that would support this theme. Farm for Fitness Families and Futures, probably fun, too. The last slide is just how important it will be to make this come true. And what that's going to involve is more than, than collaboration with our high school district and continued work with the City of Galt. It's reaching out to other partnerships, to grants as well. That will really, really be important. Again, we had held to share this with you. We wanted to make sure that we were underway with the Measure K bond. We did not want that to be confused with this project. But we think, given this very special community, the City of Galt, California, what's happening in the region with Farm for, I think this is a project that maybe could show, if Sacramento's thinking of Farm for, is there being only Galt can show them how to get it done in Galt? So that would be pretty neat. What I want to share also, that our board president, John Borden, is here. And John, you may have some things that you'd like to share also.
Just a unique opportunity that we have, obviously, with the high school board. And I think what you'll see is, in response to how education is changing with the common core and project-based learning, this is a great opportunity for us to potentially scale down what career technical education looks like within our community, not only creating more robust opportunities for our high school students in FFA, but giving exposure in our middle school, as well as potentially in our elementary school. So really excited about the, about the potential of a lot of the, the community use, which will be a good example.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
I'll read it first. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address City Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. And under public comment, I have Sean Farmer.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Hewer. I better write that down. I just want a couple things tonight. I wanted to say, a couple weeks ago, I was given a, a great opportunity. It was an honor, actually. Officer Godati from Galt PD reached out to me and asked that I be a part of trying to help with the last minute kind of shot in the arm for the toy drive that the fire department and the police department was doing. And TJ and I had, you know, touched base a few times on some things for the community. So he called me up and said, hey, you know, we're trying to finish up this toy drive, you know, with the, on a good note. So with short notice, we put together something. And I want to say, you know, thanks to everybody that helped. We had CAPS officers out there, we had voice counts, we had people from all aspects of the community. The community itself just came forward huge for us. I mean, it was literally planned on four days' notice, and we had a huge turnout. And everybody that I went to for help, and this was businesses or whoever came in and said, hey, can you do this for us? This is what we're doing. They said, how can we help? You know, what do you need? What do you need for food? You know, local businesses donating whatever. Everybody I asked was willing. And it's just, it's, it's really nice to see that you're, a community like us can just, you know, come together on short notice. I mean, this time of year, everybody's asking, everybody's coming around saying, hey, can you donate this or donate that? You know, you can only give so much. But the fact that, that people still were willing to dig deep and come out and do toy drives, I was told by Laurel Schamber, the CSD person who was deeply involved in putting on the whole toy drive in Jersey. She told us that they did the same thing in Elgro and that the turnout for Galt raised almost three times as much toys as Elgro did. And that's, that's saying something because, you know, the size of Elgro compared to Galt. So again, I was honored to be a part of that. I was glad to help. It was, it was awesome. And I just want to thank all those involved that were involved in that whole toy drive through the home. You know, ours was just a small piece of that, but it was great to be a part of that. So the second thing I want to talk about quick is something that I've been kind of working with, the beautification committee, I'm not on the beautification committee, but I do sit on the meetings. And I, and I do have a lot of conversations with Barbara Payne and some of the other members of the beautification committee. And we're getting ready to start a project that we're pretty passionate about. It, it involves some volunteer time, once a month, to help clean up litter and stuff in the community. I, myself, noticed a big problem with it. You drive around, if you really pay attention, there's just litter everywhere. You know, a lot of businesses, front businesses, some of the flower beds and stuff. I know that the city's resources are not there to have, you know, staff go around and do that. So I think this is a good chance for the beautification committee to make a big impact, you know, on short notice, just to make an immediate impact. So what we're looking at doing is reaching out to some of the schools and see if we can get students that can, that can get volunteer, community service credit, that can come volunteer. We're going to pick a certain spot in the community each month that we feel could use a good cleanup. It could be a shopping mall, it could be a park, a, a neighborhood, wherever. And then we're going to gather up our volunteers that are ready for that. And we'll go out and we're just going to do like a, a litter pickup. And we're going to be reaching out to some businesses, such as Calways, for example, to see if they would be willing to, you know, just say, that's dropping off, you know, our trash and everything. But I think it's something simple. It's not like it's a new concept. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but.
And I'm also a Gallup certified strengths coach. One of the things that I really am excited about, the possibility of working with our Galt Youth Commission, is the opportunity to share my experience with youth development and leadership. Also, I am the creator and coordinator of the ABC High School Mentor Program, which we are in our sixth year. I am proud to say that we have thirty-nine high school members who volunteer in our elementary school district, in our Bright Future Learning Centers, in our ACEs program. And I'm delighted to say that one of our commissioners is also an ABC mentor. So I love the idea of getting the chance to work with them together. I also just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I did reach out and talk to Mr. Davenport. It's kind of hard to pick between three people. They're all three very qualified, you know, right? Mr. Davenport actually said he's involved in so many things that he would step aside because I was just going to go ahead and go with the first application that we received. So I will be appointing Ms. Collier. Sherilyn Miller, is she here? Ms. Miller, I've, I've talked to the youth commission. They say they're always looking for an extra set of hands. So I'm hoping that Sherilyn will volunteer and step up and help the youth commission. So I'll work with reaching out to her and talking to her. But as it points right now, unless the council has anything else, I'd like to appoint Jennifer Collier. Okay, moving on. Information consent calendar. Okay, would you like me to read them?
I'll move to approve items one through five.
I'm going to go ahead and read them out loud first so that the public knows what we're voting on. On minutes of the regular meeting of December fifth, two thousand seventeen, and special meeting of December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, receive and file warrants for a period ending December sixth, receive and file Senate Bill one sixty-five, special tax accountability report for community facility districts. Item four, Galt Industrial Park Expansion Property Tax Exchange Agreements with Sacramento County. Item five, permit tracking software upgrade. And item six was pulled for discussion.
And I will second his motion.
Any discussion regarding items one through five? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Item passes, aye, item passes five oh. And we'll go on to item six.
Memorandum of Agreement Regarding Funding of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Seventeen, Two Thousand Eighteen.
I just have a real brief question. And I talked to the city manager earlier, and he told me that maybe Chris could respond to this. This was, there was a cost to the city for several agencies to, to initiate startup funds for the HCP. Cities, the City of Galt's contribution was thirty-five thousand dollars. There is a mechanism by which we can be, we can recoup those funds. Has that been established, or are you, you have any idea what the timeline is, or?
The short answer is no, that has not been established. But that is true, that the intent of the Habitat Conservation Plan is to put in a cost recovery component for the participating agencies. What that look, what that looks like now, we don't know.
Okay.
In fact, I think that's going to be a responsibility of the JPA Board, once that gets on, is to look at the cost components of the program. So where they are now is they're looking at, or they're responding to environmental document comments. I believe they're hoping to wrap that up shortly and get their federal approvals in very soon. They actually want to start getting the JPA Board together, probably in the spring, to really just for a meet and greet and try to get things together. And then really start working on the nuts and bolts of the fee program shortly thereafter. And I believe their goal is to get to county boards, city councils, and other approval agencies in the summer. So when the fee component of that comes together, I, I don't know. But it is a part of that. But Galt's participation compared to the others is, is pretty low.
Very low.
So we'll get our money back.
That's, that's the plan.
That's the plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Vice Mayor Cruz. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Aye, motion passes five oh. No scheduled matters, so regular calendar. City Attorney's Office?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we have a follow-up item before you, which is the review of the procedural guidelines. You reviewed them at your last City Council meeting, and we looked at some updates that could be made. The primary change that was discussed was revising the term of the mayor and vice mayor from two years to one year. I noted in here that one of the other items we talked about was no term limits. Your current procedural guidelines don't really speak to the term limits. So I realized in the resolution in your packet, I changed the procedural guidelines to note that it was from two years to one year. But if you would like to clarify as well that it's without term limits, I would just add to that, that it's a one-year term without limit as to the number of terms to which the mayor or vice mayor may be elected. In addition, there were, the most of the rest of the changes were cleanup changes that were discussed. Some revisions to the council committees in section one point five to clarify the distinction between standing and ad hoc committees of the City Council. There were also some, a deletion of a section regarding eligibility to serve on the council committees since they're, they're really comprised of council members. If you ask for staff or other assistance, typically you can determine any eligibility requirement, requirements that might apply at that time. Also suggested changes in chapter one point six that are reflected in the resolution to clarify that chapter one point six, which is titled Boards and Commissions, currently is really is to committees and commissions since the, the bodies that you have that this applies to is your planning commission, your Parks and Recreation Commission, those bodies that are identified in your, in the municipal code. And so just made some cleanup changes there to address that, as well as deleting section one point six point eight, which we discussed the last time, had the conflicting provisions with the municipal code and the changes made. So this way, any changes to the organization of those commissions and committees can be made in the municipal code without having to also revise the procedural guidelines. Also, section four point six point one would change the order of the agenda and would add an additional item between the public comment and consent calendar for reporting back of items of the committees that the council members serve on, such as SECOG and the Cable Commission and other bodies like that. Would give an opportunity to address those. I think there were a couple of other items, switching the city clerks' report also with the council comments. And then finally, we have section four point eight point one, which just made some revisions to conform with Government Code Section three six nine three six to clarify that. You do need three votes or a full, you know, a majority of your legislative body for resolutions, as well as ordinances. With that, I'll see if there's any questions or other changes.
Okay, we have a public, public comment, Al Baldwin.
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and is definitely a beautiful city of character. Tonight, I pulled the over thirty Act. I left my notes at home, so you're going to have a real short one from me tonight. But it was quite a good research that I did. I had to brag, but it was good. And it, I looked up definitions of what a mayor should have and how to perform. I'm just saying right now, I've been, I guess, coming to these, maybe twenty years, these meetings, and I've been involved with some of the council people, going to meetings at the county, and I think a mayor or two that went down there. And the one year that you become a mayor, for one year, actually, it's not even a year. It's probably eleven months and maybe even ten months because you have to go through a holiday season. But the, the whole thing is, is the mayor is supposed to have leadership and possibly gained a lot of that knowledge of being a leader from being on the council or planning commission, possibly. And be able to, to lead the city and the council also, be an example. When you go to meetings in the county in Sacramento and you discuss government opportunities, especially for your city, you can't necessarily make any promises, really, that your city can do this or do that. You can't really say, I have a goal. When you go to these meetings, it may be only for four months, five months, six months. It takes a whole year or more, but a whole year for sure, to get your feet wet being mayor. Now, if the mayor doesn't mean too much to a city, well, that's the city's challenge. But I think the mayor's position is very important. They're, they're like the president standing up and saying, well, I'm going to. It, it's something people will listen to, and the ideas will come out. But you may not be able to follow through within a year or less with all the promises that you'd want to make and changes. And I'd like to see, and through the years, mayors have made a list of things they would like to do about being mayor. And the list could be how to help the city, how to do this. I've had talks with many of the people in the public, and they want this. And I think we should follow these lines. Well, you won't have too much of an opportunity doing that. You'll be too busy learning and trying to get as much information as you can. And within one year, or less than one year, like I say, it's going to be a challenge for you to discuss to the government people in Sacramento County when you go to these meetings and you're around all these other mayors. I did do some research on how, how long other mayors in the local areas have been on as mayor. And I, I just, one year, it, it's just not there. If you hire someone for your, your offices in the city here, it takes almost a year even for that to get trained. And then you say, well, you're not going to do this anymore. It, it's just, it's not logical. You're training for the future. You're training to make this city a better place. You're training other people that don't know about Galt. You're being on camera, and people all around know that you're only going to be there for six months more, or three months more, eight months more. What can you do as mayor within that time? And what kind of promises and opportunities can you present to a lot of people in that time about Galt? And then as you go through, one mayor for a year, then another one comes in, it starts all over again. They may not have your opportunities that you would like to promote. They have their own. And then after a year of trying to get whatever they can, they can't follow through in it, another one will come into it. It, it just doesn't seem logical that one year is enough. Two years is pushing it, but it's good because now you've gotten your feet wet and you know how to dry them. So now you can go out and say, yes, last year I told you I'd do that, and this year it's beginning to happen. You can't say that. So I'm just suggesting that you, you stay with at least the two year. And it's no, no reflection on the individual. It's just my personal opinion. on the individual, it's just my personal opinion, and I, like I say, I have done research, but I did leave it home tonight, and I thought it was pretty good. So nevertheless, congratulations, one way or another, you're still going to be mayor, but I'd like to see a two-year. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Okay, any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second.
If I could just clarify that the motion would include the revision I mentioned regarding the term limits, so that a mayor could serve, obviously, more than one year. Okay, thank you.
That was included.
And I'll second the conclusion, yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huwer.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. City Manager's Office?
You want to read subject? Appoint two city council members regarding a memorandum of understanding agreement with the Galt District Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor, councilmembers, report on this. The city partners with the Chamber of Commerce throughout the year on various items, such as events, economic development activities. In recent discussions I've had, you know, with two of the board members of the chamber, they're going through kind of a strategic planning process, kind of taking a look at, you know, the future of the chamber. The discussions that we've had, you know, with the two board members, kind of conceived an idea of entering into some sort of MOU with the chamber, and define roles and responsibilities of the city and the chamber, and how can we better partner together as we serve the community. Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Manager, kind of brought forward a couple of other cities that, you know, do this. We introduced that to the chamber, they liked the idea. Our next step would be to, you know, can work with them, you know, in establishing that MOU. What I like to do this evening is ask the council to appoint two council members, to work with Amy Mendez and I on that, you know, with two, you know, chamber board members. I'm looking at probably a couple of meetings with Amy and myself, and then probably a couple of meetings with the chamber board members, before we bring back a proposed MOU to, you know, the city council and the chamber board. So I'm looking, you know, probably about four meetings, and then, you know, the, the, the appointment would be over, it wouldn't be a, a long-term appointment at this point.
I would like to appoint myself and Vice Mayor Cruz.
Would you want to appoint yourself too?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind, but, you know, it's up to Mark.
To be very honest, I've got a full plate. If you'd like to take it, go for it. I appreciate it.
Okay. Kurt, did you, was looking to?
Well, if Tom wants it, that's fine.
Sure. For me, I can, I can handle it.
Put it down as the alternate, if you need an alternate.
Okay, so do I have a, do I have a motion to, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Mayor Huwer and Councilmember Malsen.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Mayor Huwer. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor.
Further discussion?
Did you, did we want to set an alternate, just in case?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Did we want to set as alternate, just in case?
I would not.
I don't think we need to.
Not on the agenda.
Right, and I think we create more problems if we have three.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huwer.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, vote. I announce department.
Fiscal year 2016-2017 preliminary year-end operating results, and fiscal year 2017-2018 first quarter financial review.
Can you repeat that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Donna's going to get my PowerPoint up here for me in a moment. Hey, there it is.
It works.
I've had a bit of a cough lately, so please excuse me if I start coughing, I may take a sip of water or a cough drop, if that is, becomes necessary. This item is a receive and file, the fiscal year 1617 preliminary year-end operating results, and fiscal year 1718 first quarter financial review. And then we're going to ask you to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 1718 operating budget. So we'll just launch right into it, we have a lot of slides, so get ready, I guess. You know, financial management is not just something the finance department does. This is a truly a collaborative effort. When we establish the budgets, we spend a lot of time working with the departments, the departments create their, their proposed budgets, the city manager reviews, and finance department crunches numbers like mad. We're just getting ready to go into budget season, and that's really a collaborative effort with all of the city staff. It's also something that, you know, the public can participate in. When we have budget hearings and whatnot, they can come and speak at public hearing, and they know how to reach all of you as their elected official, and they can talk to you about any concerns they have about the budget or the, what the city is doing with their money. And then, of course, you approve and authorize a budget, and the city staff is tasked with implementing it. So tonight, we're going to talk about a few different things. First, we're going to look at the fiscal 1617 unaudited operating results. And when I say operating results, I'm talking about revenues minus expenses equal what, and that's your operating result. And we're going to talk a little bit about general fund, fund balance. I want to spend a little bit of time explaining fund balance. We've talked about it several times here before, but I want to cover it a little bit differently than perhaps we've talked about it before. And fiscal year 1718, you know, we went into this year, we adopted a budget, an upside-down budget. We knew that we were going to need to make some changes, and we were directed by the council to take a good look at this and see what we could do to right side up it. Right side up it, is that proper grammar? Probably not. To right it. How about to right it? So we've been working on that. And when I say we, I don't mean just the finance department, I mean the city manager and all the directors, and, and as staff, we have been diligently working on what can we do to right this ship. And so another thing we're going to talk about here tonight is the, what is our year-to-date budget to actual, in both the general fund and the Parks and Rec Fund? Tonight, we're going to focus on just those two funds. And then we're going to talk a little bit about upcoming challenges that the city faces. And I put all of this in red, because I want everybody to understand that the auditors are not finished. Our numbers were finished, the auditors are not finished, and there is a like, a possibility that these numbers I'm presenting tonight may be, may be changed. And I just don't want you to get, you know, excited if you see, the next time you see the number, it's a little bit different, it will have been a result of audit. The auditors, incidentally, are here now, doing final fieldwork. The audit was delayed this year due to staffing issues in the finance department. So let's talk about the general fund 1617 first. And so green and red for Christmas and the holidays. The green bars are the budget, and the red bar is the actual. And you'll notice that in all cases, except for Central Shop, which Central Shop is more or less level, all cases, the red bars are lower than the green bars. What that means is that expenditures came in lower than budget projections. And police is the same thing. Police didn't get put on this slide over here, because their budget is so much greater than everybody else's. When you put them on this slide, everybody else goes down to about this size, and you can't even see them. Thank you, police. This slide is going to show you the operating results by category or type of expenditure. The first section there is personnel cost. It is the largest cost that the city has in the operating funds. And once again, where the red bar is lower than the, the green bar. The second set of bars is maintenance and operation costs. That's things like office supplies, or materials and equipment, small, small equipment, small tools, professional service contracts, and all that sort of thing are in there. The third set of bars is capital. There's very little capital that we actually do through the general fund. I think in this case, there were two things. One was the PEG project that we had last year, and I think we had some Fourth Street funded by CDPG that was in the general fund as well. So these are the numbers that go with those, with those expenditures. We have the amended budget, that's the budget that was amended last July, uh, last June, and the actual results, preliminary, unaudited, and the amounts remaining. The revenues came in very close to the projection, and we would expect that to be the case, because if we are amending this budget in May or June, by that time, we really shouldn't have a real good handle on what our revenues are going to be, because the primary revenues in the general fund are property taxes and sales taxes, and, and TOT and franchise, and those are fairly steady and easy to predict. So that's not, to me, an unusual result. I would expect that revenues to come in real close, especially since you are, we are revising it at that late in the year. Expenditures kind of surprised me. The amount remaining there on the expenditures is 1.6 million, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we move along here. Transfers in, in fiscal 17, the transfers in still included cost methodology, or cost allocations to the other funds based upon the prior methodology. Recall, we changed methodology last May, and we adopted and implemented that in the fiscal 1718 budget. So fiscal 1617 still had the old methodology. That transfers in also includes a million, $96,000, I think is the number, for the, the amount of money that we got reimbursed through the property tax, tax increment process. This is the money that the DOJ clawed back from us a couple of years ago. We got that cash back last year. So that's really one-time revenues. And transfers out are the support to other funds. The general fund, as you know, has been supporting or subsidizing Parks and Recreation, and it's also been subsidizing the lighting and landscaping districts. We had estimated that those funds would need 1.7 million, but they didn't. As it turned out, their operating results were very similar to the general fund's operating results. Their expenditures also came in under budget, so that there wasn't a need to, to subsidize or supplement them in the amount we had originally projected. We're only going to subsidize them the amount that they actually need, when we have the actual year-end numbers. So if we want to look at those expenditure numbers by categories, personnel, you always need to budget personnel to your total amount of authorized positions, and you hope that you're able to recruit and, and hire your total authorized positions, and sometimes you're not able to do that. Or you have staff that leaves, and it takes you a while to get that position refilled, it might take a few months, or if you have an unsuccessful recruitment, it might take you, you know, four, six months. So you're going to have a savings and budget while that particular personnel or that particular position is not filled. Let's talk about capital projects next. We had, and tip, and this often happens with capital projects, is they extend over multiple years. You don't always get everything built, or constructed, or purchased, that you anticipated to get done in the, in the, in the 12-month period, so some of that's going to carry forward. Maintenance operations came in 747,000 less than the estimated budget. Some of that has been carried forward as open purchase orders that got carried forward to the next year. But one of the things that we're going to be doing in the next few weeks is we're going to be looking at that very closely, to see what those expenditures were, where we, as we enter, get into our next budget process, we need to know, what do we need to budget in the, in the subsequent years? If we're having, if we didn't need that much money this year, what do we really need next year? Is kind of the question that we'll be answering as we go into our budget process. We're going to drill down into this in sort of a granular level and figure out what's, what's going on there. So I'm going to move on to fund balance. There's some definitions here. These are GASB 54 definitions, and GASB is always fun, so if anyone nods off, I'll understand. So GASB 54 was, came into effect a few years ago, and what it said was that governments needed to define their fund balance, identify it by categories, and it set up these five categories of general fund balance. Non-spendable is things that are, that you can't really spend if you have an inventory, or if you have a prepaid item, that's part of your asset, so that's going to flow through as a part of your fund balance, but it's not something that you can actually spend. Restricted is identified as funds that are restricted for a specific purpose, but that are restricted by an entity other than the agent, the governing body of the agency that's being reported on. For example, the CDPG money, when we get that for a capital project, or whatever we get a grant for, we have to use it for what it was granted to us for, so it's restricted. I'm going to skip down to, well, maybe I won't. Committed are funds that are used for purposes established by the governing body, which is the city council in this instance. And a good example of that is the general fund reserve policy. We adopted a new policy last year to, and the policy is 25% of the expenditures in the general fund, plus the Parks and Recreation Fund, is to be set aside as a reserve. And what we mean by that is when we get into budgeting, we're not going to budget into that reserve without specifically getting a permission from the council. Basically, when you set that reserve, you've said to staff, don't touch this, leave this money here for a rainy day. You're the council, you adopted the reserve, you can, you can adopt another resolution changing it or spending it, that's, that's your prerogative. Assigned represents, excuse me, funds that are already earmarked for something, such as encumbrances. An encumbrance is when you've decided to purchase something, you've placed your order, but you haven't paid for it yet. But you put in a purchase order, so you can encumber those funds, in other words, save those funds for use when you do get the purchase made and you do need to pay the vendor. So those are encumbrances. And obviously, if that's money that's been assigned to something already, you can't spend it for something else. So it's part of fund balance that really can't be spent. Unassigned is the interesting number. That are the balances, or the funds that have no restrictions yet on them, and no earmarks on them. And that is the money that is sometimes called available fund balance. So let's look at how that plays out. I talked a little bit there about the, that's the general fund reserve policy we adopted last year, I think I mentioned that already. This is a six-year audited history of the general fund balance by type. You'll see in the years 2011 through 2014, really, almost everything was identified as unassigned. GASB hadn't kicked in yet, we weren't required to identify various categories yet. We had some committed numbers there, probably most likely encumbrances, a little bit of restricted funding, most likely grants, and, you know, a little bit of non-spendable, that would have been some pre-pays probably in inventories. When GASB 54 kicked in, you see that the bar changes, changes colors dramatically, because now GASB has said, please identify your fund balance in these categories. So we did that. The interesting number there is the unassigned number. That's the green at the top of the bar. The yellow there, that committed number, which is kind of the big part at the bottom of that bar, includes that general fund reserve that we were just talking about. So let's look at this in another way. This is the fiscal 1516 audited general fund balance. So we have a couple of things there, the first two sections. The first one shows the categories of fund balance with the dollar amounts, and the little bar graph shows you graphically where those, how those numbers present in the total. And last year, we had 3.382 was the amount of the reserve, and the unassigned balance was 3.243. That was last year, and that is the only reason, as your finance director, I was willing to ask you to adopt an upside-down budget. If you had not had that reserve, I wouldn't have stood up here and asked you to adopt it. Look at the last table there, it's kind of starting to show you, you've seen these numbers before, these are unmet needs, we need to find a way to address these things. Vehicles, that's really a gross estimate. That number will change when we get down to doing a vehicle replacement policy and plan. Building maintenance, that's a pretty good number. The building depart, Building Maintenance Department and Public Works, they actually did an inventory of what needed to be done, specifically this roof, this air conditioner, this paint job, you know, they did all of that and assigned estimated numbers to it. So that's really a pretty good number of what we need. Information technology, that number can come down. We've been finding, I think we commented on it in the staff report, on some of the things that we've been finding back there that are going to help us operate IT a little more efficiently, efficiently. more efficiently, efficiently. By the way, when I reference the staff report, maybe you guys have noticed it, but one of the things I always do when I present financial information, should get the staff report, and it's lengthy, I know, I'm very wordy, but that's the narrative for those who like to absorb information that way. There are also tables attached with lots and lots of numbers for individuals who like to absorb information that way. And then we have a PowerPoint with hopefully some interesting graphs, charts and graphs, for those who like to absorb information that way. And I'm always willing to have anybody ask me any questions about any of these items, but I try to present it in a way that gives everyone an opportunity to understand what we're talking about. So here's a number. If our '17, to calculate what the general, the fund balance reserve in the general fund should be, as an example, fiscal '17-'18 budget, that was adopted on June 20, it does not include any supplemental adjustments or carryforwards that have been made. The total expenditures of the general fund in the Parks and Rec are 17.3 million, and three months of that are 24%, is 4.3. We'll be talking about that number in two places. One, when we get the audited financials to you, we'll be talking about what is the audited number. Remember, over here, we had that 7.8 million on the right-hand side, that total there, 7.8 million. That was the audited fund balance. So everything that we do needs to drive off of the audited numbers. So right now, this is a projection. You'll hear about the, what the reserve should be when you see the fiscal '17 audit. And then also, when we get into the budget, we're going to talk to you about what the reserve should be and show you if we're spinning into that reserve, asking you to spin into it, or if we're, you know, keeping it set aside. So some of the budget principles, it's, a two-year budget has, operates a little bit differently than a single-year budget. This may be information all of you know already, and so if it's tedious to hear it again, I'm sorry. Hopefully, I'll shut up soon. Certain budget adjustments, appropriations, that are not spent in year one are carried forward into year two because you have a two-year budget. Typically, when you have a balanced budget, it doesn't make, your revenues and your expenditures are equal or the revenue exceed the expenditures, and it doesn't really make any difference in a two-year budget in that instance whether you spend the money in the first year or the second year. So you carry the appropriated budget forward into year two. And that includes things like open purchase orders, those are the encumbrances we talked about, unspent capital budgets because, you know, capital projects will extend over, over more than one year. And then there are a limited amount of unspent maintenance and operation budgets that, upon approval, the city manager can be carried forward. That is very limited, and it would be something to the nature of, "I had budget for this particular contract, professional services. I haven't been able to get my contract in place yet, but I'm still going to have to do it, so can I carry that budget forward into the next year when I can get my contract on the books?" Because you can't encumber it until you have a contract. So it's very limited when that occurs. But what carryforwards do is they increase the budget in year two, right? Because you're going to spend more than you originally thought you were. Technically, carryforwards decrease the budget in year one, but the budget in year one is never adjusted. The budget in year one has been approved and adopted by the council. We have expended, or received funds and expended money against it. When the auditors come along and they say, "Well, we're going to audit you, we want you to prepare your budget to actual report for us," we're going to say, "This is the budget that the council approved on June 20, and we're not going to change it based upon anything that might have gotten carried forward." And on June 20, we don't know yet what we're going to carry forward. You know, in June, we don't know because, maybe that's too granular. There's an accounting rule for governments that you can pay expenditures for 60 days following the end of the fiscal year. So in June, we don't know how much we'll get paid until the end of August, so that's one of the reasons this occurs. Anybody want to quiz me about that after? I'd be happy to spend some time talking about it. So we put a line chart in here. So you can see the relationship between revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. So you see that they trend along together. When the revenues are exceeding the expenditures, the fund balance goes up, and vice versa when it goes the other direction. So let's talk about Parks and Rec. And if you'll excuse me just one moment, I need some water. So once again, these are preliminary unaudited budgets, and once again, green is budget, red is actual. And you'll see in almost all cases there, all except the after-school program and the SOAR program, TOTS, those came out pretty even. Those are really very simple to get those right on the money. The others, you're going to have some variance because you're going to have personnel come and go, you're going to have M&amp;O that you thought you were going to use or you don't. So those other programs are where you're seeing the expenditures coming in less. Just looking at, this one looked at Parks and Rec by program, and this one looks at Parks and Rec by category, personnel, M&amp;O, capital, same thing that we saw in the general Numbers. I'm always told, "Don't put any charts in the PowerPoint," but I just can't resist it, I'm sorry. So we see here that expenditures, revenues, net before transfers is a positive 474. The transfers in is the amount that the general fund subsidized Parks and Rec and included in there are amounts that the lighting and landscaping districts reimbursed Parks and Rec for the Parks program and the Parks employees and staff and supplies that worked on the L&amp;L districts. The transfers out is the former cost allocation plan. The number in the next year will be lower. I mean, we had this discussion before, and when we get to that slide, you'll see it. What happens is that net after transfers, we try to get that as close to zero as possible. So when we do the transfers in to subsidize Parks and Recreation, we calculate, "How much do we need?" And this year, we went upside down, 91,000. You'll see when you look at the financial statements, the general fund and Parks and Rec are reported together, and in your mind, when you think about operations, you should just add those two together. So the operating results here, where we see the expenditures were under budget, we see once again that, you know, capital projects, those are carried forward. I wouldn't be too concerned about that. They've done a real good job of getting, being able to fill all but, or use all but 6.3% of their budget on personnel. But M&amp;O, again, you see, is, you know, 10.4% lower than the budget estimate. And that's another thing we'll be looking at at a more granular level. Here's the 10 years. Revenues is the pale green. Hopefully, you can all see that. And expenses is the red. And so you can see what's happening. The years up to '15-'16 are on audited numbers. '16-'17 is based upon the preliminary operating results, and '17-'18 is based upon the budget projection.
Yeah. You can really see the recession.
You certainly can, yes. You can see where, phew. Next time, if I show you the sales tax chart, you know, that's really obvious on that one. Maybe I'll bring that next time. So '17-'18, the general fund, there's the adopted, the budget as it was approved on June 20, and we have a revised budget because of the carryforwards, and those include the things we talked about, you know, encumbrances, capital projects, et cetera, and also any supplemental adjustments that you have approved thus far this year, or as of September 30, actually. And the interesting thing here to note is that the transfers in on this slide for '17- '18 are 2.4 million. When we were back in fiscal '16-'17, it was 5.5. On the 5.5, take out the million that was from the DOJ, so 4.5, that would be primarily cost allocation. We changed our methodology effective into '17-'18, and you see now where the transfer coming into the general fund is 2.4 versus the larger amount that it previously was because when we changed the allocation, the general fund paid more of its share of the cost of administration, and the other funds paid less. And that's primarily, we can go back and revisit that if you guys want to talk about it, I'm happy to. So you can see our year-to-date, I would expect at September 30 for revenues to be falling way behind. At year-to-date, we would expect, on September 30, we'd expect the remaining balance to be 75% because there's 75% of the year remaining. But revenues in general fund will not track, on that track because of property taxes. We get those in January, December, January, April, and June. Those are our primary revenues. Sales tax also tracks a little bit behind, so that's also a factor. Expenditures are tracking right on. Transfers in are tracking right on, and the transfers out haven't, none have been entered yet. Parks and Rec, same setup. Adopted budget, revised with carryforwards, remaining budgets as of, remaining amounts available as of June, September 30. So I want to talk a little bit about the efforts that staff has made so far this year to balance these, balance the budgets, close these gaps that we've had. When staff started working on this, we sat down and we said, you know, "There's a number of things we can do, but we need to identify what we can do and when we can do it." So we establish short, medium, and long-term objectives. The short term is in this current fiscal year. The medium term is in the next two-year budget cycle, and the long term is beyond that period of time. There's some things that you want to do you can't achieve in the short term, they're going to take a little bit longer to make them happen. So in short-term efforts, all of these efforts are described in detail in the narrative in the staff report. If you want more information, or you could just ask me. So we've done a lot as far as trying to share staff and reorganizing departments, going paperless, and reviewing expenditures, you know, making sure that what we are paying for is what we're getting, and making sure that we aren't procuring things we don't need or, you know, that sort of thing, just trying to be more efficient in how we use the city's money. And it's not just about reducing expenditures, it's also about looking at revenues and seeing where we need to charge something different. The city's charges for services, such as a planning fee, is a charge that's intended to cover the city's cost of handling that process. A permit fee is what the city costs to handle the permit and so forth. We're not, we're not in a profit-making business. Medium-term efforts. We have some things that we want to do here that we think will make the staff, staff more efficient, will make operations run smoother. City hall remodel is a good example of that. We have right now, for example, in utility billing, we have kind of a gauntlet that the customers have to come up and go through to pay their bills, and then somebody coming to visit, the city manager, has to run that, that gauntlet of utility bill payers to get into the city manager's office, and it's really not efficient. One of the things that we're looking at is possibly, you know, opening up windows on the lobby for utility payments rather than having them run through that gauntlet. That's a work in progress, more to follow later. If we have unused equipment, let's sell it. If it's idle and we don't need it, we don't use it, sell it. And streamlining the development permitting process is another way to make us more efficient, less staff time, and happier for the applicants. Sales tax rebate programs to incentivize retail, it's a possibility, it's one thing that other cities have done. We'll look at that, see if it's feasible in this city. Long-term efforts, long-term financial planning. Since I've been here, I've been looking at how, you know, I came right at the middle of budget season, and I looked at how we were struggling to get a two-year budget out. And what I call that is kind of the scramble. Every two years, we're scrambling, trying to get a budget, and it's the, you know, the wants and needs are just crying for attention. But in my view, there's another way to handle financial planning. And part of that is that you need to have some long-term picture of where you're going. And so we are going to be working on a plan, a financial plan, so that when we, we talk to you about what we're doing, we have an idea of where that's going to take us. It's similar to your personal budgets. I didn't have children, but I've heard that people that have children sometimes put away a college fund for them. My cats didn't go to college, so I didn't have to do that. That's something what you do, plan for the future. Annexations, that's another way to, that's another long-term effort. Those annexations will increase property and sales tax revenue, and they'll provide local employment opportunities, which is something that you want in a city. And then ongoing things that we're doing that we haven't really plugged into a time period, looking at energy efficiency, trying to go paperless in more of our processes, reviewing business license fees, reviewing Parks and Rec activity and rental fees, develop a business plan for Parks and Rec. These are things that we're working on, and you'll be hearing more about these as time goes on. So these are the proposed budget adjustments. They are detailed specifically in the staff report of what each number is for, but they are primarily for things like adjusting personnel costs down where we've done reorganizations, adjusting other expenditures down where we found that, you know, maybe the original estimate was too high, or we found some sort of cost savings. There are a few things in there that were cleanups, items that got missed on June 20 that needed to be in there. Those are pretty minor. And those are the items that we're going to ask you to adopt a resolution to approve those adjustments. And so upcoming challenges. It seems to be the nature of government these days that there's always going to be a challenge and waiting in the wings for us. CalPERS lowering of the discount rate, minimum wage increases, employee negotiations, deferred maintenance. I mean, you guys are probably getting tired of hearing this from me, but those are all things that somehow we have to work them into our long-term financial plan and figure out, "How are we going to address these things?" Here's an example of what happens to us as a city, is we build things, like new landscaping goes in, and, you know, typically, Mr. Winkler can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but typically, your capital project budget will include some amount for the original, or the initial landscaping, and once that landscaping takes hold, then it becomes the responsibility of the city to maintain. And we have some new landscaping items that are, areas that are coming into the city to maintain those. So those are additional costs. So we're going to have to look at that and put that into our next budget. One of the things, this is an illustration of what we need to look at as we move forward in our budgets, is when we adopt CIP budgets and decide to build something or whatever it is, we also need a line and estimate in there of what the maintenance and operation, once it's built, is going to be. So this really, you'll see numbers coming up in your budget for additional landscaping costs. It's something I want to make you aware of, as something that we need to pay attention to. I think I'm done. Any questions?
Yeah, on the, on the cost allocation, since we did the revision, what has been the revenue or transfers based on direct, direct charges?
We have begun direct charging staff time on projects and tracking that through the payroll system. Any direct time that should be charged to another funding source other than the fund in which the individual is normally paid. We've been on tracking that. I don't have those numbers. I can bring those numbers back to you in January.
I'm just curious if it was a significant amount to help offset some of the costs associated with the general fund?
Yes, it will offset some of those costs because what we'll do on a periodic basis, either quarterly or semiannually or even annually, probably annually, is we will go back to the cost allocation model. And what, right now, it's based on budget, but we'll go back when we have closed the year, and we'll put in the actual numbers, so that will change what each department needs to pay for administrative services. And then we will also subtract out the amounts that were paid for by other funds when we charged direct charges to other funds. So that way, I think, my view is that we will get a more So that way, I think, my view is that we will get a more accurate, actual administrative cost charged to the other funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mollson?
Yeah, I've got something.
Go for it.
After reading this three times, finally seeing it on the big screen, something jumped out at me, and on page, on slide nine, you show a, a surplus of M&amp;O funds of about seven, a little over $700,000, 700K. I go to page 13, and it's unfunded needs, unmet needs, you have a building maintenance unmet needs of a little over $900,000.
Trying to catch up with you here.
Okay.
So I was looking for slides, and you're talking about pages, right?
Yeah, oh, the slides, yeah. Slide nine and 13. I'm just comparing the, the maintenance costs.
Let me catch up with you.
13 and up at the same time. Emily, if you want to use the clicker, you get the screen up if you want.
It's probably a good idea, since I can't find it. My pages are out of order.
Oh, that'll do it to you.
Okay, this one.
Yeah.
And on this one, you're looking at which number again, please?
The M&amp;O, the amount remaining of 747,000.
Okay.
And you compare that to slide.
13.
13, where it says unfunded needs, maintenance, building maintenance unmet needs of 916,000.
Okay. And.
Are those, is that the same, are we talking about the same dollars there?
No. The number on this page is unused budget.
Uh huh.
And the number on this page is an estimate of what is needed, but not, has not yet been budgeted, for building maintenance.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So they're not the same number. Although, could extrapolate that if we had that money, should we apply some of it to that need? And that's one of the things we're going to be talking about when we go into the next budget cycle and talking about when we go into long-term financial planning. Because those needs far exceed our unassigned fund balance.
Correct.
And, and that doesn't even include the CalPERS number. So what we need to do when we start financial planning is, where are our priorities? How do we want to use our funds?
We have to have a, a full understanding of what makes up both of those. Are we making a form decision? Okay.
Yeah, when you see the budget, you'll, sorry, you'll see the detail on that in the budget, but, and that's one of the things that we're, the budget part, we're going to be looking at more granularly. Is that a word? Yeah. Any other questions?
No, thanks.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
No, no.
Councilmember Lamson?
No.
Thank you very much, Emily. Do I have a motion?
I like the graphs.
I do too, actually. I like your graphs.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, there's a resolution.
Yeah, there's a resolution attached to this. It snuck in there.
Receive and file, and then adopt a resolution amending fiscal year 27, 2018 operating budget.
Got it.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by, Councilmember Mollson? Sorry, I wasn't sure which one did it. Okay. Call for the vote.
That's fun.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kempian?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson? Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And back to the city clerk's report.
So this is a review of city committees and commissions. On November 7th, the city council directed staff to place on the agenda on an annual basis, a review of the, or city-created committees and commissions. As the agenda report states, in 2011, the city-created committees and commissions were put into the GALT municipal code book, and they pretty much established the purpose, function, rules, and regulations. So briefly summarized below is the description of each committee and commission. There are just a handful of differences amongst them. On the GALT Youth Commission, the appointees need to live within the high school district boundaries, plus there's also an appointed city council representative. On the Planning and Parks and Rec Commission, you can have up to two members that live within the GALT High School District limits. The Historic Preservation and Measure R, the members serve three-year terms. And on the Public Safety Committee, you have two city council members, and you have a staff member from the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Parks and Rec Department, and Public Works that attend, and you have five members that are appointed. That concludes my agenda report. If you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Any discussion? Donna, did I just hear you say that on the Planning Commission, two of the members can be outside the, is that by?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance?
Right.
But it's not like state law?
No, I believe that was a choice. Am I correct?
It was.
I think it was.
I thought it was, I had thought previously it was just one, so.
Do you want to change it?
Good to know. No, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, currently, all of our members live within the city.
Any discussion on limiting it to the sphere of influence? I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I.
I mean, two, two members outside the city limits, but still within the sphere of influence.
Well, they're within the GALT High School District, is that considered this?
Well, you know, some, you know, do we have any, do we have any limits on the, on the two outside the city limits, or can they be from Portland, Oregon?
Well, it says the GALT High School District, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Does the High School District go into San Joaquin County?
Yes. Yeah, we couldn't, yeah, we couldn't have somebody on our Planning Commission that's in San Joaquin County.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to expand within San Joaquin County. I think, actually, the idea of sphere of influence is a, is a good idea. Maybe we could have that brought back and.
Have a further discussion on it, perhaps?
Yeah. For both Parks and Rec and the Planning Commission?
Yes.
It does make more sense.
Okay.
I'm sure a city attorney would love that kind of cleanup.
Yes, we can return with that. It would, because it's in the municipal code, it would require an ordinance.
Any further discussion?
And then Mark, are you with the Public Safety Committee, you're comfortable with all the staff? I'm, I know that it's important to have Parks and Rec input, but I don't know if it's important for him to be at the meetings.
You know, I think the most important ones to be there would be Public Works and PD, because that's where the majority of the work's coming from.
Don't issues come up about parks?
Rarely.
Too much. Maybe garbage or things. What do you guys think?
Well, I think that's a decision of the city manager and, and his managers, who he wants to have attend.
Right. So I was asking what he thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what we can do is look at the agenda that's set, and I believe that's set through Public Works, and I can evaluate what staff needs to be there at that meeting. And I do agree, if, you know, we don't need staff, you know, you got a lot of, a lot of staff attending this, this meeting, so it's, you know.
Just trying to save you overtime.
Next item?
Discuss and review the regional boards, commissions, and committees. Again, it's from the city council meeting of November 7th. Council asked, requested an annual review, the appointments to local regional bodies. In addition to what was shown previously, city clerk's office also researched the minutes for further background information on the four locally-created committees and the one task force, which is below in the agenda report. Happy to answer any questions.
So where do things stand with the GALT, the GALT Economic Development Task Force?
Thank you.
Currently, that actually is a, a committee formed under the chamber, correct?
Correct.
Which we participate, is that going to be part of our discussion regarding our MOU?
Yes. So in my discussions with the, the chamber, and, you know, they're in the process of doing their strategic planning, what they commented to me on is they're looking at the economic task force and maybe looking at that and retooling it. And at this time, they would like to not have any further meetings of the economic task force until they have an opportunity to go through that process, and then also work with the city on the MOU. So, you know, at this time, we don't need to, you know, attend those meetings, you know, might work with the chamber, they have, you know, their lunch meetings, we can do economic development updates at, at those meetings, you know, kind of work with them until we adopt an MOU with them.
Do we have any guidelines regarding when they report out to us yearly on the information that they report to us? Like, I guess I would like to see when they do their yearly report to us, like maybe some of their goals for the next year, or, you know, things that they've done, accomplished in the year, and goals for the next year, so that we can always evaluate whether or not these committees need to, need to continue, whether or not they're benefi, I mean, I think the, I think the current committees are benefiting, I just think that maybe we need to have some guidelines regarding what gets reported out to us. I know in some years, we haven't gotten a report from all of the commissions and committees, but I know that staff is trying to make sure that that happens.
I like that idea. In fact, I, I had a note myself that, you know, the committees at least once a year ought to have like a PowerPoint or some metrics or something of what they, you know, what they did, a measure over the year. And it's good advertising for the committee and for the community, and for us, obviously.
And there's, there's a certain, you know, commissions, and all like Parks and Rec, you're planning a commission, you need.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'm excluding those.
And the other committees, you know, I, I completely agree, and I use the word value-added. You know, what is the value added? I got a lot of staff time, you know, focused on, on working with the committees. We want them to be successful, but we also, you know, want to see accomplishments. A lot of times committees do get established and they kind of, you lose the way in what is the original purpose. You know, we, I think on an annual basis, when we started this this last year, the committees were coming to the council and reporting out on their accomplishments, you know, then, you know, November, December, I think if we keep up with the process of then kind of reevaluating, you know, is there still value added to continue these committees on an annual basis? I think that's good, you know, for us to just look at and refresh and make sure we're on track.
Okay.
Quick question. I know we're doing a review, and like I said before, my, my plate is pretty full right now, and I was looking to the, the council possibly take, and I know she, she probably thinks I'm feeding her to the wolves here, but public safety and putting it back out there, and to be very honest with you, I think Councilmember Mollson would be ideal, because he's one of the founding members of, of the Public Safety Committee, if council's okay with that.
Can we do that?
Can we do that?
We would need to return, but.
Do a pause with the attorney.
Yeah.
You can resign, and then we can bring it back for an appointment.
Yes.
That'll work.
And, yes, why don't we do it that way? That way, when we bring back the other items, we can do it all together in one.
Can you be officially say I resign the position?
You're good. You got it.
Send me an email.
Does he need an email or a letter?
Does he need an email to you? Does this work?
This works. I'll bring it back.
Sometimes we just think we can accomplish more than we can. Okay. Moving on. No, no further discussion? Moving on, comments by staff?
I do have one thing I want to add, is to remind the public and city council that the meeting for January 2nd has been canceled.
Yes.
And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Winkler?
Can I yield my time to finance, or?
You've had your meetings.
Yes, we have. Just one, just a quick, again, continue to just, kudos to the city. I've got numbers here for our water conservation numbers in the month of November, and we compared to the base, same months in 2013 and 14 averaged. And though we had an exceptionally dry November, and continue to have an exceptionally dry December, we're still at 22 percent savings over those two base years. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Nothing to report, but just have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2018.
Chief?
I just want to say that today was one of our CAPS, Bruce Honey's, last day. He served 14 years in the CAPS, and he's going to be missed. We had a nice little, all the CAPS and everybody from the, a couple people from the Police Department all gathered together and, and said goodbye to him at Stratton's today, so. They opened their doors just for us. They're normally closed today, so that was, it was a great lunch for him. And like I said, he's going to be missed.
Ms. Hall? Ms., Ms. Hood?
Oh, I just wanted to, I thank the chief. I attended the awards, the police officers' awards reception last weekend, I thought it was a really great event, and good to meet everybody. So thank you, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Potts?
Yeah, just want to thank the council for everything you guys do, and staff for everything they do. We've had a, I think, a really good year. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a good New Year, 2018.
Councilmember Mollson?
Want to go along with that, I, I had a great time at the police awards ceremony last week, and I had a great time last, last weekend at the Rotary, Sunrise Rotary Community Dinner. I know those folks worked a long time, I mean, what, most of the year setting it up, probably. They worked, what was it, Friday night setting it up, and they started at 5:30 in the morning on Saturday?
Uh huh.
And I'm not sure when they got done cleaning it up, cleanup and all that, but I, I didn't see my wife for two days, she was involved with it. All I did was serve, you know, serve along with some of the other council members, and had a great time, arms still sore, and, you know, you know, serving. Merry Christmas, have a good, Happy New Year, and I guess 2018's coming.
Councilmember Kempian?
Nothing to report, other than I saw Tom at the Rotary Community Dinner, which was, seemed to be well-attended. I don't know if they broke records from last year, but a lot of people.
They're still counting.
Still counting. Have a nice holiday.
Councilmember Lamson?
Just wanted to thank Mr. Farmer for the Cars and Toys. That was quite a fantastic thing to throw together. I guess social media has some good, good things that can do some good things these days. And for the Beautification Committee, we'd like to personally thank Armando, I know he's not here tonight, for going above and beyond and getting some lights, some beautiful lights down the middle of Lincoln Way. I don't, you guys all drive down and look at them amongst the candlesticks, they're quite lovely. And they're just, they just bring a lot of goodwill and cheer, and I like them. And the Meals on Wheels did a fantastic job. I don't know how many seniors they fed, and we were a little concerned without the, with the mayor resigning, but I think the new director did a fantastic job, and lots of prizes were given away, and you guys, it was fun hanging out with all you guys. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Everybody's covered it all by the time it gets to you, and I don't, hasn't it? The police function, outstanding, very impressive. The senior dinner, always had fun with that one. The community dinner, we had one particular individual who showed up that wasn't invited, and I'm sure one of the FFA members shoot him out. Little field mouse decided to run in during the wind.
What was it?
A little field mouse.
I didn't see it. I didn't see that.
It was rather interesting to see the, see the responses from people.
The door was open, the mouse came in, yeah.
Hey, it's an open door.
It's a Christmas mouse.
And going, going to the reports on council members on regional boards, I do have one report from the Air Quality Board. With this being the holiday season and people having fireplaces and so forth, please, I ask you to check online for, at the Air Quality District's website. Just kind of give you a rough idea, if there's a high front, and when you watch the news, you'll know what I'm talking about, definitely check. Example, today was a no-burn day because of the high, high-pressure ridge coming through. Tomorrow, on the other hand, because of the rain, you can use your fireplaces, so.
Who, who's the enforcement agent on that? Because I've never been able to figure that out.
No, actually, that comes through the air. Tomorrow, on the other hand, because of the rain, you can use your fireplaces, so.
Who, who is the enforcement agent on that? Because I've never been able to figure that out.
No, actually, that comes through the Air Quality Board. It doesn't, it's not local.
So if someone has a fire and the neighbor reports them?
It's one of those things where you self, you self-regulate.
Okay, it didn't make any, I've never heard of anybody being cited for.
No, I, you know, I've never seen or heard anybody being cited for it, but it is one of those situations where if you have children or adults that have asthma or have breathing issues, it's, it's kind of a good thing to kind of keep track of it. And again, have a happy, a Happy New Year and a very Merry Christmas, and please be
Okay. So I thought the food, I really want to compliment Sunrise Rotary, the food was delicious.
Excellent.
It really was. You guys did a great job. It was, I'm just impressed that you could make that amount of food and feed that amount of people and have it be so good.
And warm, and it was all warm.
Yeah, oh, and served hot.
That's what was amazing.
And served hot.
Must have been the paddle.
You know, it is, I, it is, I just think it's one of the most fun things to do every year. I mean, we just get to come in and serve, so we just look, I know Mark works a lot, he works beforehand, but for myself, it's just fun to come in and serve and see the community, and, so it was a wonderful event, and I really enjoyed South County Services and Meals on Wheels event, and being able to spend time with our senior community, so. Everybody, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we will adjourn.